Burn it all up.
All right, it's 11:41 and we are returning out of the recess to our regularly scheduled business meeting and we are returning to item seven of Commissioner Williams' items.
All righty, Zoom and YouTube, when we go on breaks, especially when we're going to have legal online, it's reasonable to keep those streaming. I understand if there wants to be like a line that says it's because it's a recess, it's no longer part of the official meeting if it's adjourned. But people come online to participate in what's happening in the building and whether it's a weather issue or whether it's just they want to be on Zoom, I don't think we should stop the stream because at least it allows us to participate. Even though we stopped having the meeting, we had a meaningful discussion with the community with a lot of input from people that you guys regularly don't get to actually ask questions of. Legal actually answered specific questions brought forward and we're not allowing all members of the community the opportunity to be participants of it or to listen to that. And I think it will actually create a significant hardship for legal because we are asking their presence for the meetings, which is inclusive of that gap of time because that gap of times, things do happen, comments are made, and we need to be able to address those because that's all the function of Bonner County that's taking place. And so my motion is that technology maintain the meeting for Zoom and YouTube during a recess and breaks without any muting so that the people online can participate in discussion as well as to ensure that counsel is available for everything that's happening at that meeting.
Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies. Next agendized item.
All right, so all records released by legal to members of the public are to be archived on county's website. This also came from a member of the public. Legal gave their opinion that once they release an item to a member of the public, there isn't a reason that it shouldn't, could not be archived online. It would actually allow for a reduction in work by staff because once records are released, they wouldn't have to do it again because you'd be able to search those records online. So the prior, when I brought forward, it was stated that I didn't give a memorandum with my request and that the legal opinion wasn't valid. Louis Marshall gave an opinion that said he responded to my request. He doesn't have to do it on a letterhead from the prosecutor's office. He sent an email that explained it. He didn't have an issue. He also agreed that if it was necessary, we could even do something like where, when we're sending those requests and he's responding that we actually get a little box that says okay to archive on the county's website to have a kind of failsafe. So there isn't a reason, there isn't a document that you would receive in a public records release that we couldn't share with the next person that wanted that same document because legal would have already done the review. We're getting a lot of duplicate requests because people are looking for the same. I'm sure that there's a number of you that asked for, I would like something related to cameras in here. Well, if one of you asked for it and someone did the review and the work to collate all that information together, why do we look at it multiple times when we could just put it online and you could say, I got the answer that I needed? So this is intended to reduce workload, to make it easy on the public and to allow for, even, even as members of the public, there are things that you might consider asking for that would already be available to you that would reduce our resources. So my motion is with the recommendation of legal as stated, to archive documents that have been released by legal and approved to be archived on the county website moving forward.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion dies. The next agendized item on the Board of County Commissioners is from myself, so I will step down from the chair. Bonner County Code 1-200, this chapter is enacted for the purpose of establishing a regular meeting schedule for the Bonner County Board of Commissioners in order that the board activities can be carried out with greater public participation and awareness. Regular meeting, the purpose of the regular business meeting is for the Board of County Commissioners to conduct the business of Bonner County publicly. Commissioner reports are not a requirement of either Idaho statute or Bonner County Code. The regular business meeting is to conduct the business of Bonner County and should be just that. Further, there is a popular misconception that there is a particular zone for representation. All three of the Board of County Commissioners represent all 52,000 of Bonner County's residents. It is only for the purpose of the election that that zone or district matters. So therefore I will stay, I will remain stepped down from the chair and move to remove Commissioner Reports from the regular business meeting effective immediately. Is there a second?
There is.
There is a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I do have discussion on this. So I agree with some of what you said. Your Commissioner Report should actually be about the business of the Commissioner and that's only what I communicate. I communicate everything from questions that I get asked to what's going on in the county actively what I am doing. I do agree that some of the Commissioner Reports that have come forward from other districts has not contained anything other than the weather. I don't think that's what our meeting is for. It should be me telling you how I'm earning my pay as your county commissioner. It's inaccurate to say that the district doesn't matter. If each and every one of the commissioners from our districts actually worked our districts, listened and represented our districts, when you come to Sandpoint, which is the county seat, every district would feel represented. There's a reason you have to live in your district. It isn't just because you ran for office. It's because I'm supposed to be insulated within my community so that when I come to Sandpoint, I'm bringing forward the issues of the people in that district to the county seat. So that, that is a misconception and that is actually why I always say District Two Commissioner Report because when I go back to my district, I need to be asking, what's your issue? We have an issue with roads. Okay, gotta bring that issue to the county seat because Blanchard doesn't like what the roads look like. That's me representing my district. That doesn't mean I don't represent because Asia also gives you a district report of what I do in Clark Fork, of what I do around the entire county. The issue about the district report is not because I'm not talking about the business of Bonner County. It's because the two of you are not talking about the business of Bonner County. And that is what the problem is. You don't have to be required to tell, the idea that you say there is no requirement to do it doesn't work. We shouldn't need rules and bigger government to tell us how to represent the people. What you don't like is that the way in which I represent the people is I go to the people where they are and I bring it to this seat. And what you're seeing is an increase of people that are listening, hearing, following and being involved and they're changing their expectations of what this board communicates. I'll remind the people of Bonner County that a few weeks ago, Commissioner Bradshaw made the comment that I don't even know why we do Commissioner Reports. This is new. And in an attempt to address that issue, I made the comment that, well, we could just remove yours if you wanted to, thinking that that was what the issue was. The response from Commissioner Almond was, nope, we're gonna say it how we want to say it or use whatever language you use. Fine, just trying to make it easy. I've got stuff to report on. I'm not not reporting on Bonner County. And so now we want to remove not Commissioner Report, we want to remove me from telling you what you are owed as a community. There's something wrong with this pattern of behavior by this board because if you don't want to do a Commissioner Report as a Commissioner, just don't do one. But the idea that you want to take my Commissioner Report away, that's not gonna work and it's gonna cause more problems for the community because just like every single thing that this board votes the majority to take away, what do I do? I reinvent it, rewrap it and it becomes amazing. You took public comment away. Look how many Commissioner chats we have. Look how many agencies that participate. Look how much more community involvement you have. The idea of it's not business is ridiculous. It is all business. Your members of the community, regardless of who you supported, there are people that wanted to hear about different court cases. Half of what I actually put on this agenda that you guys just refused to discuss and deliberate, even though Robert's rule says we should be doing that, was from people that support the two of you. You shut everything down that they wanted you to hear as well. Why? Because I'm the one who brought the business of Bonner County to this meeting with an expectation that as a community, we demand from our elected officials that we tell you what we're doing. And that's really what you're trying to prevent. You're trying to prevent because in some ways you guys control, control the narrative in some media outlets of what can be presented in Bonner County. But in this meeting, you don't control that. So you take away district report, I'll call it something else, every single meeting. So it's pointless. Just take yours off. You're not reporting anything anyhow. You name drop people that you may or may not have had an event with. You talk about the weather, you tell us that things are bad. That's fine. But it isn't a report of business. So you can choose the opposite and say, holy crap, it is about the business. I better start reporting about the business. But if you make a decision to vote two to one to take away District Two Report with an assumption that it's going to be immediately, that doesn't actually give you the right to change the agenda, just so you know. This is an agendized item that has District Two Report and I'm still gonna give a District Two Report. And then next week, I'm gonna call it something else. And we're gonna play a game every Tuesday until you realize that both you and whatever media writes, Asia's not quitting and not going anywhere. It's gonna be a long three years. So how about you accept the advice that you started the year of and say it's gonna be different. Let me have my little five minutes and we don't have to talk very long about things unnecessarily just because you want to avoid a report that I am still going to give. Just gonna call it something else.
Commissioner.
I've had an ideal. How about we start the new year off and all three commissioners actually do Commissioner jobs where they actually do the business of the county and not be community organizers. If you want to be a community organizer, then resign and go be a community organizer. Hillary Clinton is a good one.
Mr. Bradshaw, Mr. Bradshaw, I may interrupt.
It's a business meeting. It's to do the business.
Thank you, Mr.
Mr. Bradshaw, I will bring it back. The motion, the motion on the floor that is seconded is to remove Commissioner Reports. I would like it to keep it to removing Commissioner Reports. Is there any further discussion?
Absolutely.
Excuse me.
There's a person who has an email and you actually.
And I'm gonna, may I finish my comment, Commissioner?
You don't have to pretend to be wounded. You can just speak.
Oh, no, I'm just.
I guess that was.
So the, I will remind that the standing rules limit debate unless there is a request from a board member and a ruling where any ruling of the chair can be appealed and overturned with a majority vote. So now all three of us have had a discussion. There is, is there any further discussion?
Well, I'm gonna give a clarification because you cannot enact rules that change an ordinance. And we go back to the same legal opinion that we're ignoring. The ordinance doesn't say that you can tell me I can speak twice. Robert's rules doesn't say. And in all things, I am the minority voice on the board and so deliberation is required. So you can't keep creating rules of let's silence Asia because you're not actually addressing. So I'm not someone's Hillary Clinton community organizer. I am a representative of Bonner County and you see that and you feel that in Bonner County and that is what angers you. It is visible and it is body language. What you're doing doesn't make any sense and it isn't going to change. And you do have an obligation to deliberate. So the whole exercise of what happened earlier was you guys are refusing to follow half of the rules I read about deliberation on purpose. Talk about the issue that I brought forward. I'm speaking about the business. Every single Commissioner Report. Your argument is that it's not about the business, but it is. I agree. Yours isn't about business. Mine is all about the business.
Commissioner Williams, I will remind you and I am interrupting as the chair. We are not engaging, just as I interrupted Chair, as I interrupted Commissioner Bradshaw.
Well, I didn't throw barbs at people.
Actually.
Yeah, I didn't.
Your ad hominem attacks about our Commissioner Reports are nothing but a continuous barb. So the motion on the floor, and I will remind you, and you have, you will have two minutes remaining before I will see if the other two commissioners.
What rule says time on a Commissioner deliberation?
Actually, it's in the standing rules, which are completely fine.
What standing rule tells you that you can alter based on your, that's actually not how it works.
Chairman runs the meeting and the story.
So running the meeting doesn't mean creating your own rules.
I would step down from the chair and call for the question. Is there a second?
So it's, this is a continued failure to deliberate by the board.
To call the question immediately? Roll call vote.
No.
Wait, 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 I have, I have a letter that needs to get read into the record.
I was trying to read it. Sorry, Brandon.
Yes.
The motion carries. The next item on the agenda, by the way, I will pause for a moment. Mr. Kramer, your letter is going to be read into the record during public comment.
It's not a public comment.
Please mute Mr. Kramer.
Actually, I'm gonna throw a red flag on this and I'd say file a complaint with Louis Marshall because what actually was stated in this meeting was that if people had issues they wanted addressed by individual items, that they could submit that ahead of time and have those things addressed. So it's not appropriate for you to silence Mr. Kramer because you don't like the letter that he sent in. In fact, he should be able to read it because that's what you said so long as it was in advance and that's what he did on an individual item. So it's not his public comment. So you would be violating the impromptu rule that you gave at whatever meeting that was about that. So Mr., well, there you go. December, the whatever. Mr. Kramer should be reading his comment on that item.
You are not the chair. We are going to return to regular.
You're just gonna give us more violations of this meeting for the same meeting.
You can file them as with your other reports to the Attorney General. The next item on our.
So does that count as a barb or not?
That would be known as a statement of fact. So.
Has Asia ever filed a complaint to the Attorney General? No, not once.
Our next item, our next, our next item on the agenda, we are returning to our regular order. Our next item on the agenda, Mr. Kramer, that's the second time you have been warned. If I hear another comment that is disparaging where you reference fecal material in regards to this board, you will be asked to leave. Thank you. I just said you'd be asked to leave. I don't. So our next item on the agenda is Idae Bailey has submitted an invoice for $3,712 for services conducted for the Bonner County Fairgrounds, rodeo, fairgrounds and rodeo on 10/31/2023. Idaho Code 22-204 states it shall have, and this is the Idaho Code for the fairgrounds, it shall have the power to employ labor, award prizes, make exhibition contracts, fix and charge admission and entrance fees, let contracts for concessions or services to be conducted at the fair or under the direction of the county fair board. But if any concession or services to extend for a period of less than 12 days in a calendar year, the concession or service may be awarded without bid and do all other things necessary for holding any county fairs. This invoice was inappropriately submitted by the Bonner County Fairgrounds and Rodeo to Bonner County to be paid when it is very clear on the invoice which is attached that it was the services were engaged by the Bonner County Fairgrounds and Rodeo. And I will step down from the chair and move to remit the Idae Bailey invoice to the Bonner County Fairgrounds and Rodeo for payment. Is there a second?
There is.
There is a second. Is there discussion on this?
Sure, there's discussion. So for those of you that don't know what Idae Bailey was doing was they were reviewing auditing stuff related to money about the fair. It is, we have, the reason I keep asking the question about who's given legal advice is because the letter is in contradiction with what legal has advised this board on as a relationship to the fair. This is something that should be reviewed and responded to by legal. This is in line with a Commissioner's statement about the relationship, but not in line with what our legal has said. We, if you look at what we talked about during our break time and with our auditor understanding, there's, we gotta move forward on stuff and then we gotta look back. This is not reasonable to say Idae Bailey doesn't get paid for reviewing this. So I would, not gonna support this and probably gonna end up bringing this one back. There's a problem with this board and its position against what our legal opinion is on the fair. So.
Is there any further discussion?
I have none.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Nope.
Yes?
Yes.
The motion carries. My third item for today is Idaho Code 31, oh, that's the wrong, but it's the advisor of, it's 31-8-13, which is the counties and county law, powers and duties of the Board of Commissioners, the control of suits to direct and control the prosecution and defense of all suits to which the county is a party in interest and employ counsel to conduct the same with or without the prosecuting attorney as they may direct. The B O C C is statutorily obligated by Idaho Code, Idaho Code 31-813 to direct and control all suits to which the county is a party in interest. However, the prosecuting attorney is the legal advisor to the Board of County Commissioners according to Idaho Code 31-2607. The B O C C is also responsible for the payment of claims against the county as found in Idaho Code 31-810. And therefore, it makes sense to this Commissioner, and if we are expected to pay any bill for civil litigation, which the Board of County Commissioners is in charge of, that we get to see all of the bills. So all of those bills should come through our office. The Civil Litigation Fund has, it's a challenge. There is all sorts of threats that we face from all sorts of different people across Bonner County in regards to life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. And that's just kind of the nature of the world that we live in. So I will step down from the chair and move all claims and bills from account 03471, lines 7100 through 7200, be submitted to the Board of County Commissioners for bill review prior to the disbursement of funds and to direct the risk manager to compile a comprehensive report for all fiscal year 23 claims and expenses from these lines to be presented to the Board of County Commissioners no later than February 6, 2023. Is there a second?
I second that.
There is a motion and a second on the floor. Is there discussion amongst the Board of Commissioners?
Did the, before I have a discussion, did legal approve your memo?
Is there any further discussion amongst the Board of County Commissioners?
That's a necessary component to moving forward when you want to take control and receive that information. So I'm asking you, did they review and approve it?
And I'm asking.
Which is unusual and cause, so deliberation, again, it's part of the statute. So you need to answer on what I'm asking you. And so you're choosing not to do that. So do you realize that what, one of the consequences of this meeting is that it be deemed, you didn't deliberate and she asked a question, therefore everything we did is invalid. This was a very long day and we don't want to redo it. It's a very simple question. Did legal review and approve what you're trying to do here? It will be invalidated. We're throwing up, out issues with this meeting all day today.
Is there any further discussion on this agendized item?
That is a discussion that hasn't happened. So we can't have further until we have the first. So please respond to the question that I've asked you. Has legal reviewed and approved what you're trying to do here? It is reasonable, appropriate for you to answer the question.
They had to approve it.
And it deliberates, deliberation is what is.
If they want to be paid.
Deliberation is required. It's not just deliberate with Commissioner Bradshaw. It's the board. And so my question is valid. So please answer.
There has been the.
There has not been, that is not deliberation. No, it's not.
There has been the appropriate.
No, there has not.
Madam Kirk, please proceed. Roll call vote.
It is not a deliberation to just let Asia speak twice and move on. I told you the statute for deliberation. It requires that you respond to what I'm asking and you are not running the meeting correctly. You need to respond. Did legal review what you're trying to do with their bills?
It's our, there are, legal doesn't have bills. All bills, all payments of claims, Commissioner.
Just answer the yes or no. We don't have to go into you.
Please continue with the vote.
I'm, I'm not voting and you don't get to bypass my vote. I'm asking a question to deliberate on the issue. And excuse me, whoa, 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 you don't get to, you just.
You just said you're not.
You just said I'm not voting.
You do not, no, I said you do not get to bypass my vote and you called it an abstention and it's not. I said you do not get to bypass my vote and you said it is called an abstention.
We clearly stated. We are about to go now.
No, I did not.
Into the public comment section.
All this is gonna be done. You actually don't get to remove an agendized item because you said effective immediately. It's for the next meeting. My item of District Two Report is on the agenda for today. Next week, you're bypassing District Two Report.
It is 12:05 and we are going into a two-hour recess and this meeting will resume at 2:05. You can tell time. Good job, Mr. Rose. You can tell time, good job, Mr. Rose.
I'm excited I'll be ready for the county fair.
Madam Clerk, are we ready? Good afternoon. It is 2:05 and we are returning from a recess. And we are going to begin our public comment session and we are going to start today with our online members. And the first person I'm going to call upon is Amy Lunsford. Go ahead, Ms. Lunsford. You have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Amy Lunsford, for the record. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, does Bonner County have a purchasing agent that gets quotes on commonly used supplies? Because every corporate type job I have been employed at has had office supply contracts and other, you know, use types of contracts. And we, the employees, were issued what was a forged quote and anything above and beyond, we had to pay for a forward quote. And I'm asking this question is because it seems like some of our groups have way too big of a yearly budget. And for example, the prosecutor's office, you know, they've been using a third party to transcribe meetings. And there's a lot of them. So maybe if we purchased our own transcription software, that would be cheaper for the taxpayers in the end. One transcription was $186 and it was for a rush on a special one-hour B O C C meeting about the RV park in April. They have new desks for $794. You know, they got government auditing standard literature for $221. The memo said that they needed it to give advice to the Fair Board and the sheriff. They have Prime memberships for $179. Does every elected get their own Prime account for $179? Or would it be best if we had just one account for the whole county and one person manage that? At one point, the prosecutor's office apparently remodeled an upstairs kitchen and spent $140 on a new kitchen island, $191 on a storage cabinet. They have many Kindles, many Kindle downloads and the hundreds of dollars. At one point, they bought AirPods for $199, more AirPods. At one point, they bought AirPods for $199, more AirPods for $219, an armoire for $549, gaming keyboards for $179. At what point is this okay to continually buy these excessive items for government work? There was a drone for $900. The memo said that it was for investigations. VR goggles for $779. That didn't have any memo. Apparently that just went through. And my other question is, if the prosecutor has a drone and VR goggles for investigations, why wasn't that loaned to the Sandpoint Police Department for Darcy Smith's initial investigation of her crime scene? Instead of having an officer walking around with a cell phone above his head.
Ms. Lunsford, your time has expired. The first part of your question, though, I couldn't hear because of the, is there a way to turn the volume down? It's like crazy loud. So technology, I don't know. I'm sorry. It was actually so loud I couldn't. I didn't catch the very first part of your question about your query. If you would email the board, that would be appreciated, but for the general public, I will say, we are waiting on a couple of executive sessions to get to with departments. So, Ms. Lunsford, thank you for your comments. Please email any additional questions that you may have. Mr. Kramer, go ahead.
Good afternoon, I guess now. Not morning anymore. Brandon Kramer, for the record, I have a similar question as to Ms. Lunsford as it relates to the Amazon accounts. Who has those accounts? Who has access to them? And how are they, in fact, audited? It seems reasonable that one could purchase something within an Amazon account, submit it to the county, and then return that item for Amazon credit as they see fit. So that's an interesting debacle that the county may find themselves in, rather than having a purchaser like Ms. Lunsford had asked. My second question is around, this is, I think specifically to Commissioner Omot, the ability to ask questions on specific agendized items was raised by you last week, I believe it was. And I'd like to understand the process for which the public may have their thoughts or opinions heard during these meetings, given the fact that public comment has been removed entirely.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Kramer. Christine Noel, Noella, excuse me.
Hi there.
Hold on one moment. Yeah, one moment, Ms. Noella. Thank you. I was just watching for the tech to reset your timer. Please, please begin.
Okay, so my name is Christine Logue, for the record. And I was there earlier but had to leave. I did have to get back to work today. I had a couple things of question today. And I did get one of them answered as per the commissioner's comments. I wondered if you guys had a chance to review the agenda items prior, like per se, if you, Mr. Omot, had brought something, agendized an item, and put it on there, if all the, if the other two commissioners were able to review that and see prior to the meeting. So that way, you know, if, to make a decision so quickly that you had already had a chance to look over the agendized item. And then that being said, it's really nice to hear why or why not a decision is made on those different items. What causes you to say yes or to say no? Also, I'm having a concern again with the Daily Bee. We all know that that is the paper of choice for public notices. And I had to completely get rid of my subscription just because it doesn't even come through our area. You can pay triple the amount if you want to have it online, which I don't because even internet, my area kind of sucks. So it'd be a waste of my money. But it's still being used as the source to put in the public notices when it's, it's not readily available to anyone else. Or not everybody, excuse me, is what I meant to say. It's not in our area, north of Spirit Lake, Old Town, Priest River. The only place that gets it is the east side of our county. Is there something else we can do about that? And then, Mr. Omot, you represent us all, or you said that you represent us all as a, as a county, and that I believe is true. And I'm just wondering that when an item is brought to your attention, such as many of us are bringing up, to have you guys consider those to be put on the agenda or, you know, talk about or bring it to them, what is, what is the protocol for that? Do you have to do something specific to get, like per se you or Mr. Bradshaw? Can anyone just, any one of you three commissioners put those items on the list? And if so, how come only Asia seems to be putting them on? And then, the public comment being at the end, it seems that it ends or adds more. Instead of, you know, me wanting to come there, say what I have to say, and then go about our business, it seems that I'm listening through all these meetings and I'm coming up with all these other notes and all these other questions. But I just wanted to bring that to your attention and wondered if it could be returned to the beginning.
Your time has expired. Thank you for your comment.
And HR, return back to the.
Thank you for your comments. We are moving on to the next speaker. You're welcome. Christina Nicholas Anderson.
Christina Nicholas Anderson, for the record. Thank you for hearing my comments today. There's been much speculation and controversy over the I C C O, its purpose, membership existence, and whether it exists and why, and its impact on both the B O C C and the taxpayers. Rather than allowing for further speculation and rumors, Ms. Lunsford and I have discussed hosting a formal meeting in which we would extend an invitation to all current and former members of the I C C O to attend. Members could choose to attend or not at their own choosing. Those in attendance would be invited to give a three- to five-minute presentation on their role in the I C C O, either pastor present. Members of the public would have the opportunity to submit questions on index cards, which would be read to the I C C O members by the meeting facilitator, with a limit on the length of the responses. No audience participation would be allowed to allow for a structured and productive meeting. The meeting would have a hard start and stop time to allow officials to return to their respective jobs. It is the feeling this would be a good use of taxpayer resources, considering these officials have already invested significant amounts of times in these meetings and have now been subject to much ridicule. I feel this would serve to educate the public once and for all. We believe we've identified an unbiased approach to hosting the meeting and find the county building would be the most appropriate neutral place to hold said meeting. If you find the meeting would be better hosted by a county employee to proxy, we'll happily step aside to allow that to take place. We were simply offering to do some of the legwork. We understand that you don't rent or allow community members to use the county buildings. So we're asking if the B O C C would either host the meeting or allow us to proxy it and do some of the legwork in effort to bring this whole I C C O thing to light once and for all and allow its members to either clear their name or educate us once and for all on what they do or what they don't do. We're happy to help in any way necessary to facilitate this effort respectfully and solution-focused. Christina L. Nicholas Anderson. We welcome your feedback and thank you for considering this.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Anderson. Mr. Hutchings, go ahead.
This is Spencer Hutchings, for the record. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
So glad. You sound like you're so happy to hear from me, Luke. I'm glad to make your Tuesday. I was curious. I may have mentioned this in the past, and if I did, I don't think anything happened. Where's Darcy's laptop and what's on her laptop? Why is there this big mystery over finances when we have this gal's laptop, which is county-owned? And nobody seems to have looked at it. Or did somebody look at it and they don't want to tell us what's on it? I don't know. But there's a laptop out there and I'm kind of curious why nobody's being told what's on it.
Take that up with prosecutor.
Well, the prosecutor is dropping in on this meeting, isn't he? Or did he die of boredom? Oh, I don't know.
I'll look to continue with his comments.
So if the prosecutor, and from what my understanding was that the, I think Clerk Rosedale had the laptop for like a year and never looked at it. I mean, or the clerk's office had it. So if they've had it, how come nobody's looked at it? I guess, you know, maybe Lewis needs to go get it or something. I'm not sure. I'd like you to know your attempts to silence the public and to silence Asia and to put her in a little box and make sure she can't do anything are very, very obvious. And I'm sure at this point you know they're very obvious and you're doing it anyways, which means you don't care. So you don't care what, that your obvious attempts to silence the public and silent Asia or silence Asia are being seen by everybody. Man, there's got to be some serious motivation for you to do that because you are really angering a lot of people. Seeing you pick on this lady who's trying to do her job while the two of you are doing your best to do nothing or to do things that are benefiting you in some way. I don't know what you're.
Well, Mr. Hutchings, that's where I'm going to stop you. You have a history of making comments. And as I said at the beginning, that is not derogatory. I will not tolerate that. Your comments are done. Thank you, Mr. Hutchings. No, you are done, Mr. Hutchings. That was, I appreciate that, but you will not be making comments. In your last go-round, it was about the ability of someone to, on this board, to purchase their own private property. I T, Mr. Hutchings is done speaking today. Are there any other members online that would like to participate? Seeing none, we will begin with our printed list of participants and we will begin with Ms. Ann Wilder-Chamberlain.
She didn't have.
Okay, does she have a comment? I will read it into the record. I'll take the other one from Mr. Kramer as well. All right, and I'm going to start with Mr. Kramer's. Commissioners, I am writing, this is from Brandon Kramer, who has already spoken. I'm writing to ask that you not approve this memorandum and instead keep the commissioner reports as part of the B O C C weekly business meeting agenda. As stated in the memo, the purpose of the B O C C weekly business meeting is one-dash-two-hundred purpose. This chapter is enacted for the purpose of establishing a regular meeting schedule for the Bonner County Board of Commissioners in order that the board activities can be carried out with greater public participation and awareness. Ordinance one ninety-two enacted, April ninth, nineteen ninety. Unfortunately, the suggestion to remove or the act of actually removing the commissioner reports from the B O C C weekly business meeting is contrary to the key element of the weekly business meeting. It is very clear the reason why the B O C C weekly business meetings exist is to, in order that board activities can be carried out with greater public participation and awareness. I have added emphasis so it is abundantly clear why the B O C C weekly business meeting is used. The commissioner reports, when used appropriately, do in fact provide us, the public, a greater awareness of what is happening with the operations of Bonner County and provide us with the greatest opportunity to participate via asking questions over any other mechanism. Without the commissioner reports, the public would not be aware of the commissioner chats, progress, and updates on the Idaho Association of Counties and other board activities. It is true, there is no law, ordinance, or regulation which specifically requires a commissioner's report. However, I call upon each of you to operate to a higher level than what is minimally required. As with all things in life, nobody desires for the absolutely minimum standards to be met. As a school teacher, surely Commissioner Omot wanted more for his students than D grades, although Ds get degrees. As a pastor, Commissioner Bradshaw surely wants his flock to be rich in the fruit of the spirit and not stop at only placing their faith in Jesus. As a holder of an M B A, surely Commissioner Williams doesn't want a business to break even each year, but rather have exceptional profits. All that to say, removing commissioner reports will beholden you to operating that much closer to the absolute minimum in your capacity as a county commissioner. I am confident that in your other endeavors, you strive for excellence, and I urge you to do the same here. Best regards, Brandon Kramer. Yes, there is no law, ordinance, or regulation which prohibits the commissioner reports. Mr. Kramer, I will tell you, because you asked for this to be read into the record, your phone number will be found on that document. The next is from Ms. Ann Chamberlain. My name is Ann Wilder-Chamberlain and I live north of Priest River at three four nine Primrose Lane. I have spoken to all of you about the necessity of creating a telecommunications ordinance to protect Bonner County residents from the proliferation of microwave radiation flooding our country. You can see on the map how many antennas are already in Sandpoint alone. The wireless industry is a formidable enemy if you have no protective language in place. Kootenay County is currently dealing with this problem as the wireless industry is determined to place unnecessary cell towers in residential neighborhoods all over the county, and residents are rising up to fight it. In the Potlatch Hill neighborhood, residents had several good documented reasons for the commissioners to deny the placement of a cell tower in their neighborhood, including a water issue and no significant gap in coverage. The county, following local land use planning rules, denied the facility and A T and T is now trying to sue them because, as their attorney stated, there is insufficient language in their telecommunications code to prevent the placement of that tower. For this reason, I am asking the B O C C to update our comprehensive plan to include protections that we also currently do not have. In two thousand and twenty-two, Andrew Campanelli, the top litigator on behalf of municipalities in the country, for only $8,000, wrote a model telecom ordinance for Dalton Gardens with full legal backing. Every municipality in the state can use it. Kootenay County has asked for it. Why not Bonner County? I have a presentation I would like to give you and your constituents regarding what you can legally put into an ordinance to protect you and Bonner County residents from wireless industry overreach. I am asking that this be put on the agenda for next week and that the B O C C subsequently has a public workshop to discuss the details. Thank you. One hundred, one hundred and thirty towers and one hundred and eighty-seven antennas in Sandpoint alone. And there is a copy for each of the commissioners, and there will be one that will be entered into the record.
So I need to add something to Ann. I scheduled her workshop. She has her workshop scheduled on the sixteenth, which is next Tuesday at one P M. after the business meeting to give her PowerPoint presentation for information.
Thank you, Commissioner. And now we will return to the public, Ms. Diane Welly.
I've come to you in the past citing pieces of the armor of God.
Pardon me, Ms. Diane. Would you stay? I apologize, but for the people that are.
Diane Welly, for the record.
Thank you.
With which, which we must arm ourselves against the evil that I believe is creeping into Bonner County. I made a critical error. We're not to come wearing a piece of the armor at a time where to wear the entire set of armor at all times. Commissioner Bradshaw, you were correct once when you suggested the enemy had a foothold in this building. However, it didn't begin or start in two thousand and twenty-three. It didn't begin with any of you three. It was already here and it was waiting to do what the enemy does best, cause division in secret. And you were more than happy to play his game. As, as was the smirking commissioner, who is more than happy to harass by proxy. What that commissioner doesn't know is that he is a patsy for real evil, who is playing him like a fiddle and will toss him aside like a toy eventually. The enemy has turned this county into a laughing stock across the county.
I am going to stop you now.
The enemy has prompted attacks on the county clerk, on the sheriff, and on the prosecutor.
I'm going to ask you to cease your comments.
Tape is the overriding theme in Bonner County and the county is losing.
We will take a.
Luke, I want no more apologies from you as I requested previously. No, sorry.
Uh, Ms. W. Can I handle this, Lieutenant?
The enemy divided.
It scared me much better than it can be.
It is 2:31, and we are returning back to our public comments section, and I will return by beginning with the purpose for the public comments segment of the Board of County Commissioners Business Meeting is to enable citizens with issue or concerns which they wish to bring to the board's attention and afford an opportunity for consideration on a future agenda for possible board action. The board will not engage in dialogue with the presenter during the session, but rather may choose to schedule the presenter's topic for board consideration at a future business meeting. Questions may be directed to an individual board member for the purpose of clarifying issues or to obtain additional information for the purpose of scheduling the matter for a future business meeting. However, no action will be taken on any issue or concern brought to the board's attention during this session. The chair will not entertain under any circumstances comments derogatory in nature toward any board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public. And I will bring to the members that are here of the public, this has been a trying There will not be continued derogatory comments toward any board member, staff member, elected official, or member of the public. Another comment of that session, we will just immediately recess before going into the executive session because we have staff members that are here to serve the public. And this gotcha game that has been played is not going to continue. With that, our next speaker is Mr. Dan Welly. Yes, you are, sir. But you don't have to, do you have any comments to make? George, which I'm assuming is George Garrick. Jennifer Kramer.
Jennifer Kramer for the record. I forget who asked it, about the items that we bring forth, that any one of you three can add them to the agenda for discussion. And Luke, I saw you nodding your head that that was correct. Help me understand, although I guess this isn't dialogue, but I fail to understand why, when Asia puts items on that are public items, that you refuse to even second them for discussion, for deliberation, so that we can at least understand where you're coming from. And so my request is that you would be more respectful of the public and our desire for business to be done in the county, and discuss these items and actually deliberate, and don't just shut down things because they're Asia's topics. Thank you.
I'll clarify that they're not Asians on this particular one. These were your, right, they're the request of the public from Ms. Lunsford to Ms. Nichols-Anderson to Mr. Kramer online. Public comment is that I hear you, and I respond by putting it on the agenda, and it should be that we hear what you guys want to know about those topics.
Our next public speaker is Mr. Rick Kramer.
Rick Kramer for the record. I would like, on the agenda next week, that you, Mr. Omat, explain to us, the county, why we can't, we can't have public comment, why you, why you remove that. And the commissioners' reports, the commissioners' reports are important to us, and you didn't explain why you want to remove it. You just removed it. You just instantaneously said, we're removing this immediately. And I'd like for you next week to explain to us your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. The next speaker is Mr. Dan Rose.
Good afternoon. Dan Rose for the record. Public comment has existed since ordinance creation in 1990, ordinance 192. The board's decision to retool, reboot the weekly business meeting is not operational improvement, but rather destruction of efficient longstanding procedure. I bring to you today a request that the Board of County Commissioners create an agenda item to instruct or be part of the Comprehensive Planning Committee ability to reopen the utilities portion of the comprehensive plan. Suggested amendment to address an obvious oversight as compared to other utilities within that same Public Services, Facilities, and Utilities section of the comp plan, which has also been provided to the planning director and the planning commission. Under code, any person can, can ask for this to be reopened. I am doing it personally, and I would ask that you do it as my representative. The planning commission's suggested update for Public Services, Facilities, and Utilities dated November 7th yet, has yet to be scheduled as a recommendation update, which is the next step. And then the step after that would be a resolution by the board after you've discussed and decided it. The resolutions listed on the 23 and 24 list on the website do not identify a Public Services, Facilities, or Utilities currently adopted amendment by the B O C C, so it's still open for consideration. The planning commission's recommendation has not yet been drafted or publicly posted at the comp site either. The plan neither includes the identification of telecommunications providers nor is a coverage map of the provider service areas presented like other sections in that section of Public Services, Facilities, and Utilities. It is well-known that telecommunications provider, providers such as AT&amp;T, Verizon, and SpaceX have service areas and facilities, those cell towers are facilities, defined by structures under the Bonner County Ordinance 11-219 and Bonner County Ordinance 12-819, both being the definition of structure. Additionally, Bonner County Ordinance 1208 Communication Towers is defined, and 12-821 Urban Services is defined, and Urban Services includes telephone services. Public Service, Facilities, and Utilities, Chapter 3, Section 3.4, needs to be added to the, to address telecommunications service providers, facilities, structures, and geographic coverage overlays, as at least AT&amp;T and Verizon receive tax or service fees from individual phone bills to be used in infrastructure services, including 911 calls.
Mr. Rose, your time is up. Would you email that to us, please?
I will. And if I could just close, without, I really, actually, I think you have one there.
If you'll email, I'll get it to Chair Songstad and our planning director, and I will follow up with you.
Okay, and I have done that personally to them in the office today. Without, without an added section, Public Services, Facilities, and Utilities, Chapter 3, Section 3.4, I suggest any relief resolution toward adoption of that Public Services, Facilities, and Utilities Comp Plan Amendment pursuant to 676502 and 6509 is incomplete and nullified. Thank you.
We'll take a look at it. Thank you. Mr. Bowman.
Dave Bowman for the record. Commissioner Ahmet, at December 19th business meeting, you falsely accused Diane Welly of lying and reacting.
Mr. Bowman.
Nope, I'm going on.
Mr. Bowman.
I'm stating that.
You are not, Mr. Bowman.
You reacted unlawfully, removing the agendas out of your public comment.
That's, that's it.
You can sit there on your ass. Nothing personal.
Mr. Bowman.
I'm going to, please don't put your hands on me.
No, you don't need to put his hands on him.
Her comment was that both former commissioners showed up.
We're going, we are recessed.
During the middle of executive session, she did not lie. I first reobserved Dan McDonald coming and going.